Welcome, audience. It's nice to have members of the community here. I'd like to remind everyone to silence your cellphone and electronic devices. Tonight's board meeting is being livestreamed on Yucay Unified's YouTube channel. This link is accessible on our website. Trustees, be sure to have your microphones turned on and speak into the microphone. If audience members wish to address the board, please fill out a public comment form and present it to the executive assistant over here prior to the beginning of public comment. Public comment is taken for items not on the agenda, and each speaker is given five minutes. Public comment for items on the agenda is taken at the time of the item, and each speaker is given five minutes. At this point, I'd like to have you stand for the flag salute.
Attention, salute.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Superintendent Kubin, do we have a report out from closed session?
There is nothing to report.
Okay. Do we do this now? Do we do this now? Not yet, okay. We need an approval of the agenda.
There's one change to the agenda. We are removing item D4 from the agenda, the approval of agreement with Michael's Transportation Service.
Aye.
I move acceptance of the agenda with the removal of D4.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Right. Next, we have our student advisory report, and tonight, we welcome Megan Dolan. She is here just to substitute tonight for our usual board member rep, and so we're very glad to have you here, Megan.
Thank you. So, our, just a little update, since the fires, Yucay High School was an evacuation center for the fire victims, and it was also a donation drop-off center, which was organized by senior Juan Gonzalez. And homecoming was postponed because of the fires, and it took place last week. And so, in first place was the seniors, second were the freshmen, third were the juniors, and fourth were the sophomores. And now, winter sports are starting, and so tryouts for all of the sports are this week. And winter ball is on December 9th, and the theme for that dance will be decided on Monday at the student council meeting. That's it.
Thank you. And I'd just like to say that the homecoming activities were a lot of fun. It's nice to see all that spirit. At this point, we have public comment for items that are not on the agenda, and as a reminder, you will have five minutes for public comment. We ask that you please state your name clearly when you address the board. Mrs. Glensir will set the time for five minutes. If you have not completed your comments, when the timer rings, I will immediately inform you that your time is up. You may then leave any written document you have with the executive assistant for the board's information. Speakers are cautioned that under California law, no person is immune from liability for making intentionally false or defamatory comments regarding any person simply because those comments are made at a public meeting. So at this point, I would like to ask Valeria Estrada to come to the microphone. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Valeria Estrada, and I'm a student from Yucay High School, and I come from the micro education program. And I want to talk about my summer experience. I had the opportunity to go to Sac State to study there for two weeks and stay in the dorms. And while we were there, we took three classes throughout the day, which was engineering, English, and math. And we were, as we completed the courses, at the end, we were giving college credits. And we also, we had field trips over the weekends to go to museums, and also a water park, which is really fun. And it's a great experience getting to know new people and making new friendships, but then it's really sad in the end when you have to say goodbye to everyone. And I just really liked this experience, and I really recommend it to anyone who has the opportunity to take it, because it's really great. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm glad you enjoyed it. Okay, next, we have Giselle Flores.
Hello, my name is...
Can you keep this down? Yeah. There you go.
Hello, my name is Giselle. I go to eighth grade, and I go to Pomalera Middle School. This summer, I went to Washington, DC, and we learned a lot about history. First, we went to Sacramento, and then we went to Washington. And we went to a lot of history workshop, and we went to go see the White House, and it was really fun, and I really recommend it to everyone.
Wow, thank you. So glad you got to do that. Great. At this point, we'll have employee organizations' brief reports, and I understand that our CSEA representative was unable to be here tonight, but she has sent a message for Nicole to read. Is that correct?
Correct. So this is from Lisa Rantella. Our local CSEA chapter, after the horrific fires, removed to do more to assist our local members quickly. We created a local chapter fire relief fund and have given out eight checks to members who have lost their homes and suffered while being displaced. We're holding a vote for a 2017-18 tentative agreement at our next chapter meeting next Thursday. I'm confident we will ratify it without issue. Our chapter has been very busy, as I'm sure most of us in, most of us in service have been since the firestorms. I personally have been out visiting sites and assisting members where needed in hopes to alleviate a little stress and get back to some of the normalcy, not only for our members, but for our students. Kindness and love always win. Let us carry this message in our actions and words with everyone in our community. It is my belief we need more of this in our lives. Humanity suffers when others feel less than, less than at the action of our words or others. Thank you for allowing me to be of service. Lisa Rantella, CSEA Chapter 194 President.
Thank you. Next, we have the UTA report from Terry DeSelke.
Good evening. Thank you. So through CTA, we have Fact Foundation, which has given grants to over 12, I think maybe 13, teachers who either lost their home or were displaced. That totaled over $20,000, and I was able to go give those checks to them personally. Some of them had tears. I certainly did, and they were all very appreciative of the help. Those teachers have been there for their students every single day, even though their own lives have been affected. Teachers may not have been first responders, but we are long-term responders, and we will continue to be there for all of the students as, as we are needed. I was fortunate to attend the Dia de los Muertos at Grace Hudson School. I saw how much energy was put into that by the community at that school. It was a really awesome cultural exchange event. I, I really liked it. It was the first time I had been. And the feedback that we received from the November 1st PD Day was positive so far. I know Katie's going to send something out, but everything that I heard so far at our rep council meeting said they really appreciated learning from each other. So, just in the future, teachers, we're, we kind of think that we know it all, and we like sharing all that information with each other. So, we like giving PD to each other. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now, we have our leadership team report, and I believe that's Mr. Sterns.
Hello, good evening. I have just a couple of quick things to share. First of all, as we're getting back to normal, or this new normal, I think with the principals and leadership teams, we're, we're now focusing, now that we're back to work and going again on our data, and looking at attendance rates, suspension rates, benchmark results, and all of that work that we need to do as we try to increase and monitor and support student achievement on our sites. There's a lot, there's a lot of work being done by, by leadership teams and principals and admin on that type of work, and there's different reports we do, like our site plans, our SARC, and so on and so forth. So, it's a season of data. We, at Eagle Peak, we're working on STEM education, of course, and I want to share with you a program, and Ian, if you could press the expand key, and you're going to play a quick little fish game for me using the W and S keys, because I know you're a gamer. So, once you press play, you're going to avoid the shark and the octopus, and you're going to try to eat the fish food. So you can press play, uh-huh, on that, yep, okay, and the program's not working. That's just fantastic. Go ahead, go ahead and press stop and play one more time. There you go.
Yikes, that's right.
Eat the fish food.
You got the fish.
Oh, you got the fish food, good.
Woo! Wait, wait, he's trying to...
He's good. If you get to 10, you win, by the way.
But he's starving.
Up, up, up. Okay, go ahead and press the stop button in, and minimize and go to see inside. You can minimize on the left. There you go. Okay, so it's really, really neat, is inside of this game, and you actually click the see inside button, there's a lot of really interesting code that applies to a lot of mathematical concepts that students are going to be learning. So, first of all, those fish appear at random coordinates on the X-Y axis. So, you begin to teach kids what the X-Y axis is, which they learn in fifth grade. You also talk about game design, right? You have fish within this cartoon world. You wouldn't have a dog, unless you wanted to be really silly, but within the underwater experience, how do we design a game that makes sense in the cartoon world? You have the octopus and the shark trying to get the fish, right? You also have if-then statements and logic statements. If the shark is touching the nice little fish, the fish loses a point, and that point really is a variable. And once the, once the variables, once the points get down to zero, the game is over, and so the variables change. So you have all these mathematical concepts, variables, X-Y axis, if-then statements, forever loops, game design, and so on and so forth. And it's extremely engaging to students, and as we transition in the math class to X-Y axis and coordinates, you can say, remember in Scratch coding how we, how we learned that the X, that the Y axis is up and down, and that your characters, when they need to fly and go up, that's on the Y, and that X is across. And so, kids remember this stuff, and it helps them in their math classes. So, I'm becoming a firm believer in this coding program, not only for Eagle Peak STEM, but I think for a lot of fourth and fifth graders to learn and experience and so on. So this, this is the journey that we're going on, and we ask ourselves continually, what, what piece of learning works best at what grade and with what, what group of kids? And so ultimately, Scratch, this basic coding program, is going to land in fifth grade for our STEM students, and it's really fun, too. And also, for, for many students have difficulty reading or doing regular math, this is a great hook for them because of the fun factor. So that's one thing we've been doing out at, out of the school, in fifth grade in particular, and these, and you're seeing inside this program, all these coding tiles that you can swipe over from the menu to build your game, or whatever it is you're trying to do. And it's fun, it's really fun. We, we, we had all the students make Pong, basically. Remember Pong? Tyler, yep, late 70s, okay, old school Atari? And we made Pong in about 15, 20 minutes. So it's, which, you know, it's awesome, it's really awesome. On a more, on a more serious note, we've been talking about the fires here, I think at this meeting, you know, every day, there's something new. One of the latest was, we went to Eagle Peak, and we're in high school, and we lost our diploma. So, can you help us? And the answer is, yes, we can, we can, we can reach out to all of our alum and put in order with Jostens, our diploma yearbook company, and get the diplomas to the students. And fortunately, we have old yearbooks. One of, one of our employees in the office lost everything, Eagle Peak alum, and we had the old yearbooks in boxes. So there's stuff like that that's ongoing, you know, as we're all trying to support everybody out in the valley. And not only is it work-specific to Eagle Peak students and families and so on, there's a tremendous amount of community work that, that's ongoing. I know Zoe's a huge part of it, and it's just that rebuilding, it's that rebuilding piece, and it's, it's a huge project, it's an awesome project. And I think, I think the main, the main lesson and approach is that individual, individualization is the most important way we can help families, rather than buying 40 backpacks that all have the same thing. We, we learn the individual story. How can we specifically help you and your family? And then, for example, put in a big Amazon order that some donor wants to just give, and find out what the kids want, and you make the order and support the family. So individualization is a very, very important and strategic way, I think, of rebuilding and supporting. So ongoing work every single day to support families and kids with the fire situation. Yes, any questions I can help you with?
I don't have a question, I just have a comment, Dan. I want to thank you so much for everything that you've done for the community of Redwood Valley, for the kids, obviously, and their families. Eagle Peak has done a tremendous job from holding up signs, welcoming the community back in. I, I really appreciate it, and you and Principal Osland did a wonderful job at the football game on Friday night, honoring Kai and Cressa Shepherd, and just know from my heart how much I appreciate all of your leadership and the staff at Eagle Peak.
Thank you. And speaking of which, the week of the fire, a little kid rode his bike up to the, to the Army. The US Army was in the parking lot, along with some pigs on leashes, of all things. And the little kid asked the Army guy, "Is the dance still going to happen?" And the Army guy said, "I don't know," and, and he shared that with me later. So, no, the dance was not going to happen, but it's happening tonight in about 10 minutes, so I'm off to the glow-in-the-dark dance, because we're going to keep on rolling, so thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Okay. Next, we have the acceptance of donations. So the donations this month include five district-wide donations from Acme Rigging, from Sit Mendocino, from Realty World, Salsa Realty, Friedman Brothers, and Savings Bank of Mendocino County, and from Gail Monpier, a donation of books for Yocayo School. For Oak Manor Elementary, we have Yucay Natural Foods Co-op and Canteen Service. And for Yocayo School, the Rodriguez Family Fund donated a garden fence. And for Nakomas School, Nakomas PTO made a donation for awards for running. And Yucay Natural Foods donated to elementary, to Nakomas Elementary School, and Yocayo Nakomas Preschool. And the total for the donations this month is $5,142.74. So, we need a motion to accept these donations. So moved? And a second?
I'll second.
All in favor of accepting these donations with appreciation?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right. Now we have the approval of the facility's master plan vision, and I think, Penny?
I think I'll intro that.
Oh, okay. Superintendent Kubin?
So just for the public, we had a board workshop, I believe, last Monday, a week ago Monday, a two-hour workshop on the facility's master plan. It's been a lengthy process. I believe it started in last January, so almost a year-long process involved engaging stakeholders in what the vision is for our facilities in our district, and, and as it aligns to our strategic plan. So, this facility's master plan really is a vision. The next step really is to figure out funding strategies, which we talked a little bit about at the last board meeting, but the document really is a vision for the future of our district as it relates to facilities. So we are asking the board for approval of that vision for Yucay Unified School District's facilities master plan.
All right, we need a motion to approve this master plan, and if you want to look in your agenda, there's some wording, or you can change that wording if you'd like. So do we have a motion?
I so moved. Do you want me to repeat what says?
Yes, please.
Okay. Approval of the facility's master plan vision for Yucay Unified School District.
Okay. Do we want to amend that motion, or? I see, I see...
Can you see it, Ann?
I can't get to it, I'm all confused.
And Mollgar?
I'm all confused, but I thought that we just wanted to use the language to make sure that this did not mean we were making a permanent commitment to fund everything in it.
That is correct. And that's why the word vision is in there? It really is a vision for our, the future of our facilities.
Okay.
It's not approving any particular projects at this point, it is approving the overall vision for the district of where we're headed. Any future projects we would bring forward to the board individually.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yes.
So Bee, would you like to add the word visionary in there?
Okay. That sounds fine.
I think it's a moment.
But it says visionary.
Yeah. It does say.
Oh, okay. Okay. So it...
I think it sounds okay.
All right.
Do you have to add visionary?
Excuse me?
Is that one add? Or just keep it as visionary?
So the recommendation, the recommended motion, if you want it, is that we recommend approval of the facility's master plan and school site assessments as a visionary and working document to guide our future facilities work.
Okay. That sounds good.
Is that all right, Bee?
That is all right.
Do we have a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next on the agenda is the reappointment of classified employees representative to the Personnel Commission. And Nicole Glensir?
So at the, at last month's meeting, I came to the board the nomination of Marcia Giacominy as the Classified School Employees Association Representative to the Personnel Commission, and then it went, at the October 17th meeting, to the Personnel Commission for their public hearing, and so tonight, this comes to you for approval, and administration recommends approval for the reappointment of Martha Giacominy as Classified School Employees Association Representative to the Personnel Commission, effective December 1st, 2017, for a three-year term.
Right. Do we have a motion to that effect?
I so moved.
Okay.
I think she's a great choice again.
Okay, a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Right. We now have a report from the Transportation Department.
So the board requested an update on how things are going with, in transportation. You had a presentation last year, and we welcome our new transportation supervisor, Matt Brown, and Gabe will be alongside of them, and thank you so much to our awesome bus drivers for coming, too. So, Matt will be here to walk you through the report. The report is, has been in your packet, but he'll walk you through some of the highlights, and then you have time for questions or comments.
Okay. Good evening. I just want to present a brief report on the state of the Transportation Department right now. So, this year, transportation, the budget is $2,094,836. You can see the biggest portion of that is for payroll and benefits. The other things, parts repairs, fuel, contracted transportation services, we do contracted transportation services to take some students to Santa Rosa. Also, some parents are paid to transport their own students in lieu, and then there's just some operational cost in there for lighting, things such as that. Transportation currently has 33 school buses. 26 of those are large buses, we call transit-style or type-D buses. For those buses, there's an agenda item tonight that they will be declared obsolete, and for clean air purposes, that's the right thing to do. And we have seven wheelchair-type buses, type-A buses, to transport special needs students to and from school. We're also in the midst of obtaining three electric buses by a grant from the North Coast United Air Quality Management District. So those are free buses for us. It's clean technology, they're, they're electric, and there's also a portion of the grant is for the infrastructure to plug them in and recharge them. So, once we receive them, we want to show them off and let people know that Yucay is using clean energy. Currently, we have 24 staff members in transportation. There's a director, of course, our transportation, our services secretary, who's partially funded by maintenance and operations, partially funded by transportation, transportation supervisor. We have two instructors on staff who are also drivers. We also have 16 bus drivers, one utility driver, and three mechanics on staff. This year, we have 16 routes in operation. Four of those are special ed routes, and 12 of them are on, are on the big buses. Last year, there were 21 routes. So you can see that we're starting off down from what we had last year. We're currently training more drivers for, to add to the staff. As we can, as we train them, then we can add routes back. We'll have to see where our greatest needs are for services. We have one route currently being done in a white, non-commercial van with a utility driver, and we're looking to add another one very soon. This is to relieve some of the pressure, especially on the, some of the special ed routes, to reduce ride times, and then if new students come in with transportation needs that would have an extended ride time, we can use that to help relieve some of that. Our training schedule, that's all, that's become a big question. So, we have five drivers right now currently in the training program. State requires 20 hours of classroom instruction, as well as 20 hours of behind-the-wheel instruction to become a school bus driver. That's, that's a state minimum. We have one driver currently in behind-the-wheel training. Four drivers just completed their classroom, four new trainees just finished their classroom training today. The behind-the-wheel training is going to be done consecutively and not concurrently. In other words, we can't train all five of them at the same time. They have to be trained one at a time, tested by the CHP, and then certified to become school bus drivers. To obtain those 20 hours of behind-the-wheel training, it seems excessive, but it takes three weeks to complete behind-the-wheel training. We only do about two or three hours a day. We can't, you know, do behind-the-wheel training for 10 hours a day. People just don't pay attention that long, and they get fatigued driving for that long. So it's two or three hours at a time. We have one driver who's ready to start testing next week on Monday, I just found out. If no more training help becomes available, then the final trainee will be tested in March. We're hoping to get some additional help for training. I've gone down to, there's a driver-trainer advisory council for the local area, and they have a meeting once a month in Santa Rosa. I went down there last week. Said we really need help up here. If anyone's interested, please come up and, or contact me, and we'll get you to work And there's, there's hope that we can complete this training sooner rather than later, but if we're doing them one at a time the way we are now, then we won't be, see the final trainee ready until March. I've also been contacted by the Personnel Commission and said that we have four more people interested in becoming school bus drivers, which would be wonderful for the department, and we'd be ready to begin training them in the classroom in, in January, after the first of the year. There's a lot of issues affecting transportation right now. The relocation of the families due to fires, we're going to be bringing families from one end of the district to the other, and that's expected after, after something like this. We did not have routes in place to do this before the school year started, so it means adding additional stops to the current routes, which will extend the ride time for some students. I'm also working on routes because of overflow at schools due to capacity. When a child moves into an area that's impacted, then they have to be moved to another school, and it's our job to transport them to wherever their new school is going to be. Again, we didn't have those routes set up before the year began, and so I have to add those stops to current routes. Homeless students, I'm getting requests for those, and they could be transported from as far as Hoplin to Eagle Peak School, which is quite a ride under the best conditions. And when you put them on buses that already have stops, it extends the ride length for them. Needs of special education students. So, we get requests that students might need to be put on a special schedule. If they're in special ed classes, their day might begin a little bit later or might end a little bit earlier. They move through the district, so we've got to be prepared to transport them when they move. And then we have, let's see, three drivers right now on long-term leave. So, those are positions that we have within the department that remain unfilled at this time because the drivers are on a long-term leave situation. We are not ready to replace them yet. We also have two unfilled positions that, once we get these drivers trained, and like I say, one's testing next week, we can fill one of those, and then as soon as possible we can, we'll fill the next one. There's also, right now, across the nation, there's a school bus driver shortage. So, if you have not heard about that, there are some places that have had to get rid of their school buses altogether. I heard today that Hawaii can't get enough staff to operate their school buses. I've heard that there are districts that can't get enough drivers to operate their school buses at all. They've had to just contact the parents and let them know there's not going to be any school buses this year until we can get some drivers. There's a lot of different reasons for this. I, it's, it's kind of complicated. Right now, nobody wants to start to become a school bus driver. I've seen this trend go up and down through the years, and hopefully it'll start going up again. Statewide, driver instructors, there's a lot of people retiring that are school bus driver instructors, and the state can only train so many of those instructors per year, so they're not being replaced at the rate that they're retiring from being school bus drivers. So, are there any questions?
Ann?
I, I wanted to talk about an idea that we had discussed previously, which was encouraging paraprofessionals who work in the classroom to become duly trained as bus drivers, so that when we needed a substitute bus driver, they could slip in, even if that meant we paid them more. Whatever happened to that idea? That was for your time, sir.
Nicole, did you? Yeah.
I'm trying to rewind, rewind in my brain. I think we, I think we sent out something, asking people if they were interested in training or something like that, but I, right now, I can't remember. I think that was springtime, maybe?
They're more valuable as an employee if they're trained in two things. Could we also, I mean, I know it's a huge undertaking to talk about doing some sort of dual classification that pays a dollar more an hour or something like that, but when you think about the hassle factor that happens, when we have to find a substitute and we don't have any, it seems like it might be worth it. So, I don't know what the next step would be, or what the next, you know, I'm not asking you to commit to 500 hours of labor on this project without really knowing.
I, I just remembered part of our conversation about it. Sorry. The rewinding's still occurring. We, again, this is with our prior transportation director, and what, what we were talking about at the time was, how do we do the training because, and when would we do the training? And so, anyway, we didn't, it was at the discussion stage, so I'm sorry, we didn't progress with that.
Well, I don't know. I mean, you can do the cost-benefit analysis and decide. If you tell me it's really not worth it, that's a stupid idea, then I'm willing to take that. But we were also talking about the fact that so many more employees want to work the full day for the full benefit set, and so that's what we were looking at, that it would be easier to recruit.
So, Nicole, can you guys look at that and get something to me so I can communicate it back to the board, what we're, what our next steps are?
Gail?
Oh, I was just wondering if, are we, I know in the beginning of the school year, we hit an issue with not having enough buses, and are we hiring outside buses for anything right now?
Yeah.
I, I saw an Amtrak bus coming out of the high school. I was just curious.
For athletic trips. It, it's not unusual to use charter buses for athletic trips or field trips that we can't accommodate due to time constraints. You know, we, the buses are doing routes until about 8:30, and they start doing routes again between 1:30 and 4 o'clock in the afternoon. So, if there's going to be any trips out of town at that time, we just can't accommodate it. So, we use charter services for that.
But, Gail, in the past, we have accommodated it better than we're doing it now because we're short drivers, but we are using charter buses, and, you know, we prefer to do most of it ourselves because they're a lot more expensive. I know that transportation has also worked with the high school because last year, we overspent the athletic transportation budget, and so I believe that, that, and Penny could probably address this better than I can, but I believe that there was a meeting with Ty and Gordon and the Transportation Department to talk about how ideas that they have to operate within the budget, even though we are hiring charter buses. I know field trips are going out right now in charter buses. They're a lot more expensive, but there's no other option.
We, we are transporting as much as possible. We do do some transportation, the mid-days outside of the normal busing, and then weekends, and also, you know, the evenings, and when we can, we'll identify buses that are field trip buses that are leaving a little bit earlier, and we flex, we'll combine some routes to get a driver on the bus if possible. Debbie Kirby's been doing a great job of kind of spearheading that, so, and she's, she's one of our, fills one of our driver instructor positions.
So, I'm confused. When you said, I know we had put in $100,000 in the LCAP budget for transporting athletic teams, but then it was less than that, and it was put in at $80,000 the second year. So, have we exceeded the $80,000, or have we exceeded the $100,000?
I don't think we've exceeded it this year.
Oh, okay.
It was the last year, but it was a problem. We're trying not to exceed it this year.
So, and Deb, in the, in the meeting that she, she alluded to, where we talked about kind of trying to keep it within the bounds, that was the $80,000 was the number that we talked about.
Oh, good. Thank you. Trustee Fernandez?
I like your sweatshirts. They're great. I was wondering, it says that, that you were talking, the training is being done consecutively, not concurrently. If the trainer is only doing two hours a day, is it possible to have it be concurrent and train several people at the, a day to expedite it?
As we get staffed, then we can train more drivers per day, but currently, our trainer is also a driver. So, if she needs to drive in the morning, the afternoon, that only leaves a window of about four hours to train.
Zoe's question is, if we're doing two hours a day, there's a, an ability to do two potentially during that time instead of one?
Could somebody else take her route? So, I know you're short on, on, on drivers, but it seems like if, if we tried to increase our, our driver pool, then we would maybe have fewer problems.
And we have been doing that so our trainer, Selena, can teach the class this week. We've been covering her route morning and afternoon, and we hope to continue doing that, but of course, we never know what's going to happen next week as far as if people call in sick, if people become unavailable to drive, then she'll be back out, back out in the bus. I'm driving when needed, just to relieve her so she can do additional training. Like I say, if, there's a good chance we can get this training done sooner, but if things don't get, if things don't change, then it could take as long as March.
I'm just wondering if maybe as a policy, rather than saying it will be done consecutively, we could try to think about it as we will, we will, we will attempt to do it concurrently, like have that be our goals rather than consecutively?
Definitely.
If that would speed it along.
Trustee, answer.
I have two unrelated questions. Why don't people want to be bus drivers anymore?
So, my first answer is, traditionally, when the economy is doing well, people don't want to be driving a bus with 70 or 80 kids sitting behind them.
They want to be driving something else? Is that?
Well, no, they would, they would take other positions, you know, in service, in the service industry. And then, when we seem to get a lot of people applying for buses, is when the economy is not doing so well, and private sector businesses aren't, aren't hiring as much, then they'll turn to the public sector, and they think, well, you know, maybe school bus driving isn't so bad. It only requires a minimum of training, and there's benefits there. So, that's when we have a lot of people attracted to the industry and willing to work for six hours a day.
Because it's, it's sort of a hard job. It's, I mean, that's what you're saying.
Can I, can I chime in just a little bit, too? Because if you're going to be a bus driver, it's a lifestyle choice that many people are not willing to make.
Yes.
So, there's regular drug testing, so if you have a medical marijuana prescription, you cannot partake of marijuana at any point because there is random drug testing. So, it really is, it's not just a job, it is a lifestyle choice.
Lifestyle choice outside of the hours you're even driving the bus.
Finally, something I'm qualified for.
So, it's hard. You have to have a lifestyle choice outside of driving the kids around. Yeah, it sounds hard.
And, and yearly physicals, and you have to also be careful.
Thank you, to those of you who are doing it.
They can't go to the restaurant and have a glass of wine and drive.
Super hard. So, the second question, unrelated. Has, has the district considered applying for public assistance from FEMA for having to transport kids that were impacted by the fire? So, there's something in FEMA called public assistance as opposed to individual assistance. So, individual assistance helps families impacted by the fire. Public assistance helps public agencies impacted by the fire, and I think the deadline is like Monday or something crazy, so.
The same thing you turned your estimate in for about a week and a half ago?
For what?
They turned in an estimate.
And there's another one we, I didn't fully read it today, from the County Office of Ed that begins due December 1st.
Okay, so you're on it, maybe?
Well, I haven't heard this piece, but about transportation.
Like, I don't know whether it'd be eligible, but it sounds, sounds like it. It sounds like a public agency being impacted by the fire with costs, so I just wondered, might want to include that.
Yeah, I don't know. Penny, have we included that?
I don't believe.
I don't recall seeing it, so, thank you.
No, there's about 6,000 lawyers in Santa Rosa who are specializing in this, and I bet they have already researched it, and they're advertising in every newspaper, so I wonder if they might be a source. Trustee Arkin?
I thought we were talking about buying vans. Did we stop thinking about that?
No, we bought the vans.
Oh, you did buy?
We bought two. There is one that is in regular operation right now.
Okay.
And we're looking at maybe putting another one out next week.
And so, is this going to help with transportation for sports? Was that part of that?
Yeah, actually, today, I did receive a request from the athletic director, wondering if he could use both the vans next weekend to take a cross-country team to Hayward. So, we're going to arrange for, for him to do that.
I'm glad to hear that.
Can all Class A drivers drive the vans? Is that a thing?
Yes, as, as long as they're nine passengers or less when transporting students.
The, the idea would be they'd still be district employees, so it'd be the coaches, and they'd have to be vetted, and, and the ideal would be, you know, we talked about when we were brainstorming on ways to defray our transportation costs, costs for having to hire out. So, for instance, a charter company, one of the things we identified is we'd have, our teams were, didn't match the size of the buses, so a lot of times you'd have overflow, and you'd have to have two buses. Well, if we ran one of those buses in a van concurrently, that didn't require a bus driver. I, I don't, I just want to emphasize, the vans don't take the place of the buses for most of our, our teams and most of our field trips. So, the vans would not be able to transport football or water polo, you know, et cetera. This is a very small category that would, but it would defray those costs, would help out quite a bit in some cases.
I, I have a couple of questions, too. First of all, I would like to say, bus driving is a tough job. As a former elementary principal, I know that, and I think I told many bus drivers, thank you, I would never do your job. So, I know how hard it is. I understand that there's two unfilled positions and three on leave right now, is that correct? Have we looked into hiring retirees on a part-time basis? I've been thinking about what we do with our retired teachers. We pay them pretty well to substitute, and I wondered if we could work out something like that for retired bus drivers to get some of them back in.
It's, it's something we can look into. They're limited in the amount of hours they're, they're allowed to work under CalPERS rules.
Isn't that only for a few months? Are they always?
It's 1,060 hours, and it's, yeah, six months.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Anyway, go ahead. We interrupted you.
And, yeah, you'd have to ask someone. I'm happy to talk with anyone who's interested in working as a school bus driver, of course, even retired UUSD school bus drivers. If they want to come back, we'd be happy to have the help, but they'd have, they'd have to be updated on their training somewhat.
Right. I understand that.
But it would work.
But I just, I think we've got to think outside the box here. I, I mean, we're in desperate needs right now, so I'm, you know, trying to think of things that we could possibly do. We have a question from the audience, or?
Can we speak?
What's that?
Can we, can we speak?
Um, would you?
I feel bad for him.
Oh, okay.
It wasn't for this.
I have a couple more things as you're coming to Debbie with the form. I understand that there's quite a long wait sometimes after school for buses also, and that there's some very lengthy rides for young children. Will this change when we have more drivers on?
Oh, definitely. The plan is, you know, if we get back up to the staffing we have last year, as soon as that happens, then those excessive wait times that were created this year will be eliminated. We'll also identify the areas that are, that have the greatest need, you know, to reduce wait times or ride lengths, and put those first when it comes to reinstating routes.
I mean, I just can't believe, I mean, it makes the bus driver's job that much harder when you're busing kids for, you know, 85 minutes in the morning to school. That's, that's just tough. I mean, the kids are restless, and they don't want to be there. And it just, it looks like it could possibly be March before we get this completely settled, and I'm just, you know, I just think, we've got to think outside the box. We've got to think of some better ways to handle this because I, I just, this isn't acceptable for our kids or our employees or whatever. or our employees or whatever. I think we've got to do something better. So, any other questions?
No, but I'd like to hear him if there's anything else to add from the job.
At this point, we have a public comment card for, from Todd Hunter, to address this issue, I believe.
Good evening. One of the problems with getting people to come back once they've retired is the substitute wage is quite substandard. I mean, it's a lot lower than a regular driver. So it's not very attractive.
That's why I said maybe we could do something to make it more attractive.
Yeah, and that would be money, unfortunately. You know, I mean, if you're going to get down to brass tacks, the substitute wage, we have two regular, well, one regular substitute driver, and that's what he does. But then we have another driver that comes in occasionally when we get really desperate. But I know they've both talked about, you know, it's not really worth their time. They do it because they like to do it and they want to help out. The other thing about the charter buses I wanted to speak about is how much more they are. I mean, at least twice, sometimes three times as much as a school bus is. Sure, it doesn't, you know, it's, the bus, school bus is not as comfortable, but it, you know, at least they get to where they're going. And, you know, it's more money for the other, for us drivers, actually, because, you know, it's usually outside the normal hours. And so it's something that we like to do, and we can't do it right now because of the lack of drivers. How you mitigate that, I don't know. We need to, you know, like they talked about, speed up the training process. And it's just something that's got to be an ongoing thing. You can't just get to a point and say, okay, we've got the positions filled. It doesn't work because all it takes is a couple of injuries or somebody has to have surgery. We need to make it a continual thing with the training.
Thank you. Yes, with the increased amount of the charter buses and the after-school money we're paying people to watch students, it seems like we could certainly look at paying substitutes more.
Yeah, when you think about how much the, how much more the charters are, I mean, it's, it would be worth it, I think, to think about a raise, you know, just a thought.
Thank you.
Can I, can I make a motion then, Carolyn, to, I don't know if it seems appropriate, to ask Deb and Nicole and Penny to look at the modeling, a retiree substitute pay rate similar to the process that we did with retired teachers, which for those who don't know was, was I think at their last rate or their beginning rate. It was quite a bit more than your regular substitute for a retiree because we're recognizing that they know our district, they know our kids, they are trained, and they have some advantages that are, you know, more than your average substitute off the street. I would, I would support looking into that.
You can definitely look into it. Just to clarify, the certificated, the retiree pay, I think it's step one, column one, on the certificated salary schedule. So, but it's definitely more than a regular substitute would make.
Step one, column one?
For certificated, for a retiree. Teacher.
Right. I got it. But you could do some sort of equivalent arrangement for a retiree so they would be getting paid more than your regular substitute rate. So we wouldn't just be relying on people to have like goodwill to be your substitute. It should be a little bit more than that.
We will look into that.
Thank you. Okay, is, are there any other questions?
I'm wondering what the status, I know you've been incredibly busy with dealing with the fire displacement, but I'm wondering about the bus passes and when, how that's going.
We have made the decision to delay that until next year. Our plan was to roll it out in September, implement it first of October. And with everything that has been going on, transportation-related, fire-related, we have just decided this week to delay it until next year.
So the families did get the letters? I can't remember this whole process. They did get letters?
Correct. So we'll be communicating that out. You know, our sites have obviously been through a lot so far this year. And to implement a change at this time, it's mostly impacted at the elementary schools, you know, getting kindergarten students to show a bus pass. There was a lot of concern from the elementary principals in the beginning, but it's a change, and change is difficult, and we worked through it. But at this point in the school year, we, we will be implementing it next year. I'm not excited about it, but it's the right thing. It really is the right thing for everything that we have going on in the district right now.
Are there any other questions? Thank you both very much for coming and presenting what's going on in transportation, and we appreciate you being here.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next we have Nicole Blitzer to talk about negotiations.
So tonight, we're sunshining the sections of the certificated contract that we intend to negotiate this year. Those sections are Section 2 Association Rights, Section 7 Hours of Employment, Section 8.1 General Salary Schedule Provisions, Section 11 Unit Member Evaluation Procedures, Section 18 Terms, Section 19 Reopeners, and Section 21 Site-Based Decision Making. So in the attachment, there is more detail to this, but I thought for, I would just take questions if you have questions. Yes?
Will UTA be sunshining, will UTA be sunshining anything this year?
The chief negotiator, Jim Rafe, said that they will not be sunshining anything, that the only thing they want to discuss is compensation, which is always open.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, we need a motion to approve the district's initial proposal for negotiations with UTA.
I so move.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next, we have Penny to talk about certificated and classified management.
Yes, this is the AB 1200 public disclosure that's required to be sent to our County Office of Education anytime we make a negotiated change that impacts our budget. And so this one is simply adding a Step 15 and a, or a Step 20 and a Step 25 to the certified, or the certificated and classified management salary schedule. And the Step 20 would be a 5% increase over the Step 15, and the Step 25 would be a 5% increase over the Step 20. There would be no financial impact this year or next year. And if certain employees remain with the district, then the third year out, there would potentially be a $15,000, $70 increase.
And Penny, I'll just add, this just lines things up with the certificated salary schedule, 25 years, and then the longevity increments related to our regular classified employees.
More of an equity for everyone.
Is there a motion to accept this longevity increase?
I so move.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
D 7 to D 28 are first readings of board policy and administrative regulations. Are there questions about any of these? We won't be voting on them tonight, but the next meeting.
I had a bunch of, I mean, some questions.
I have one.
I had a question on D 7, D 24, D 25.
Well, let's just start with D 7.
I'm just curious. I know that the statement was made that the plans would be available to the public, and I'm just curious where they're available. I was thinking it would be neat to have a copy of each school's plan up at the desk where we put textbooks when parents want to come in, or just somewhere where if parents wanted to come in and look at it, or are they available in the schools, or they used to be?
The single plans for student achievement?
Yes, they are. We put them, as soon as we're finished with this board meeting, we put them in a binder in the bookcases down here. And then I believe we post them on each school's website.
Thank you. People put so much work into them, it's nice to see it rest.
Okay, do you have others there?
Oh, I had D 24 on the shorter day for TKs. I was a little confused by that. I didn't know what that meant. For example, if it, if teachers, and I know we do this sometimes, if a teacher deemed that the students were, would ever be a time when we would consider having the TKs go home earlier than the regular Ks. I realize that might be an issue in terms of transportation, but I'm just, I see teachers struggling with what you're supposed to be doing by law and, which is really impossible to achieve.
Katie, do you want to address that?
Sure.
So for transitional kindergarten, you can, the general law says that the TK students should be going to school the same amount of time as a kindergarten student. So because we have an extended day kindergarten, that's why we do our TK. You can ask for a waiver from the state, but you have to go through that process to have a different time of TK than your kindergarten.
I had another question on that same one.
Okay.
And I know I've raised this before, and I'm sure people are tired of hearing about it, but it did note in the, the policy itself that it's important to remember that the state mandated that an extended day includes a lot of experiential programming and development to the appropriate program. And I know I asked Aaron how he felt our kindergartens were doing with that, and he said it was slow to come and wasn't sure if it was an accepted philosophy. I'm just concerned that as we feel the stress of having kids achieve more, we're back to pushing things down into kindergarten that are not experiential or developmentally appropriate. And it's probably micromanaging, but I have to say that. Yeah. Who's watching it? Who's, you know, I know some teachers don't give a choice. I mean, it's six hours straight of work for kindergarteners, in my opinion, inappropriate. So I just want to be sure that somebody is reminding teachers of that or giving teachers training in it or advocating for little people.
So our, part of the collaborative that we worked with MCOE, we really worked a lot on developmentally appropriate and differentiating for TK. There's always more to do. The students, though, really aren't, I mean, they're engaged in recess and lunch. It's not, you know, six hours straight. Also, our new math curriculum is a very hands-on math curriculum. That was one of the reasons the kindergarten teachers really felt like it was very appropriate for students at that age. So that was another reason why we chose that program. It was strong in the lower grades. So we don't, and then many of our teachers, you know, all have a time where there's free choice, and we have materials in the classroom for students to have exploration and creativity time. But it's not, we don't mandate, you know, we don't say you have to have a free time, but it is a best practice for students. And most of our kindergarten teachers know that because everyone I've been into, I've seen that, those times happening.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Megan?
I had a question about D 14, drug and alcohol-free schools. In the rationale, it says the policy also reflects new law which prohibits any person from possessing, smoking, or ingesting cannabis on school grounds while children are present. But the policy sounds like it's all the time, which is what I'd prefer anyway. But I just wanted to make sure I wasn't misunderstanding something.
You're not misunderstanding.
So it's, if there, it's, there's not a lot of, pot smoking's not allowed on campus whether children are present or not.
That is correct.
Okay, good.
It's the, it's the proposition that was more generous, but our policy is not more generous.
The state law said you can decide whether you want it to be when children are present or not, and we're doing it all the way, whether they're there or not. Okay.
Thank you, that's helpful.
Okay, any other questions about these first readings? Okay, Gail has another.
On the D 26, on, talking about a child who turns five after December 1st with superintendent's permission and assessment. It said anytime after December. Is that implying, or can we presume that somebody would say no, that a child who turned five in March would enter kindergarten when a teacher has her whole classroom scheduled in?
I don't, I don't think that has ever happened.
Okay. I would like to think that.
I mean, Katie, I don't, I can't think of a case where that's ever happened in my 11 years as a superintendent. I really can't think of a student entering in March as a five-year-old.
Yeah, so she took off. Go ahead and use your mic.
Is that on?
No. Am I on now?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Technically, you know, we could look at, we could consider a student coming in at that age, but we have to look at all the factors. Would it be an appropriate placement? And usually it is not at that point in time an appropriate placement. We also have to have room. It's also socially very challenging for a student to transition in March. So although technically, you know, the possibility's there, it's, we, you know, would really not recommend it.
And my last thing.
Okay.
My perennial search for TK support. It talked again in the policy about aligning with the Preschool Learning Foundation and the preschool curriculum frameworks for TK students. And I haven't seen anybody using any of those manuals, but how, I mean, how do we expect teachers and how can we support teachers in giving, in providing the modified curriculum that legally they are supposed to provide, but which I totally understand is almost impossible when you have two different groups of students? I mean, how do we support teachers in supporting the TKers in their class?
I think one of the biggest supports we gave was having instructional paras in there because the idea behind a, if you have a combination class and using the foundational standards is that you're differentiating so that you can do small group instruction. And so that's really the way to do that and to be able to modify that curriculum. So that, that is probably the biggest support that we've given those teachers so that they can have time to, and adults in the classroom to help with those students.
Thank you.
Megan, did you have another one?
No.
Anybody else? All right, then we will move on to the superintendent's report.
Just to be brief, a couple of things. One is in the most recent journal for the Association of California School Administrators, there is a Ucaya High student who graduated last year who is, who was selected for our region's Every Student Succeeding Award. And he received a $1,000 scholarship. So we're really proud of him and nice to see his awesome smile in our administrators' journal.
On the front?
Right on the front, yes. It's great. And we were unable to go be in San Jose when the award was given out. So Fort Bragg Unified grabbed it for us to give to him, and we'll be giving him his scholarship this week, which is really great. Rodrigo Portillo graduated last year, and he's attending Mendocino College. Homecoming was great. Ucaya has the best homecoming in the state of California, I have to say. Having worked in San Diego and the Bay Area, really, Ucaya has the best homecoming. The students pour so much effort into it. And I know this year, having And I know this year, having had it postponed for, for a couple of weeks, it was even more daunting with more time there. But it's so fun to watch the students in action and all the spirit that they have, so. Always a fun week. And I do want to make one comment. I'm proud of our staff, some of our staff members. There was a proposed marijuana dispensary application, being proposed for the corner of Logap and North State Street. And some of our employees went to the planning commission meeting to speak about the fact that it, although it is 605 feet away from a school, the ordinance says it has to be 600 feet or less, it's en route to 11 schools in our community. And so the application last night was withdrawn. And so, anyway, we appreciate that. And as we enter this very interesting time with the legalization of marijuana, we need to remember kids and be champions and advocates for our kids. Because as you look at our marked increase in marijuana incidents last year and even more this year, it is alarming, and I, I'd like to actually have this discussion with the board in the next couple of months, after we've strategized with some stakeholders about what more we can do. We, we really need to continue to watch out for our kids, because as their brains are developing, marijuana is not such a good choice for them. So I'm really happy that that did not go through.
Okay, board members, any board member reports?
Can I just say one thing? I've been following all these strikes and things, and I've said it to Penny before, but I feel so proud to be associated with this district because of our fiscal responsibility and of the involvement in the LCAP plan. I can't tell you how many people I talked to who have no idea what the LCAP is or have any, no knowledge of how you get involved. So thank you, Penny, for your stewardship and keeping us solvent, so we're not striking, which we don't do anymore.
Okay, we have another action item. I have, we need a motion to suspend the expulsion of student AA 1109 2017 for the fall of 1718 and the spring of 2018 school year.
I so move.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we need a motion.
I, oh, I'm sorry. I wasn't present for the discussion, so I, I'm gonna abstain, just 'cause I missed the session.
As do I.
Just because I was absent.
All right, we also need a motion to suspend the expulsion of student BB 1109 2017 for the fall of 2017-18 and the spring of the 2018 school year.
And I'll also abstain on that one, okay?
We have a motion?
I will make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I have one question, I'm sorry I didn't pull it earlier. I'm wondering about the warrants. So, you know, these warrants, we have to pay our bills and everything, but I'm just wondering, I, I wanted to know why I was not invited on the $2,600 trip with California Wine Tours. So I'm a little offended.
We thought that. We thought it'd be nice to clarify.
It was not actually a wine tour, it was a charter bus with no wine.
You sent all the students?
They stopped by the tasting room, and we said, no.
So there is a description line, and there's just a number there. There, it's probably their invoice number that you're putting in there, but you might wanna, when something looks weird like that, you might wanna put in an actual description, just like water polo or whatever. And it's not a little more than just field trip. And don't field trip.
Are there any other questions? All right, can we?
You know, I had just one question. You know, when we had the, with the, with the single plans?
Yes.
I, I noticed that Eagle Peak didn't have in their SSC, they had no parents. And if Dan just missed it and didn't put them in, is that my?
They do have parents on their SSC. We'll get that, we'll get that corrected.
I didn't, I did notice that, and I thought they probably just hadn't been approved at that point. Are there any other questions about the consent agenda? If not, we have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I so move.
Second?
Aye. I mean, I second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All right. So now we're at planning. Do we have any items from board members that need to be brought up at future meetings that?
I do think that there could potentially be a request from FEMA for additional space on the Redwood Valley campus. They've already been working with maintenance to use for some, for some sorting of debris. And, but they might need other things, so just, you know, I just wanted to mention that, that they might, it might even be something that requires a board vote or something, so we'll have to see.
Okay. Anything else? All right, yes.
I don't know if this is jumping the gun yet or not, but there's discussion of Purple Pipe. It's reusing reclaimed water from the wastewater system in Ukiah. It would be incredible to lower our water bill and help our community by not dumping our sewage in the Russian River. So perhaps we need to discuss that in the future.
Okay. So is, Superintendent, is that something we could put on future?
Yes, I don't, I don't know about a timeline yet, Trustee Nelson, but we will certainly be talking about it in the future. I won't say like in five years, but in, in the next few months, likely.
It could be as long as five years, but.
Yes.
We'll work on it.
Got it.
Okay, anything else? If not, we need a motion to adjourn?
Oh.
Oh, agenda planning, don't we already have that for next month?
Trustee Fernandez's first meeting as president.
I wanna be on that agenda planning.
Believe me, I know that.
And while we're looking at calendars, and Debbie's pulling that up, I should've said this in my superintendent's comments, but tonight, I was reflecting on the length of our board meetings. And I know over the last six years, it's, it's something we've really worked on. And I just want to note that it is 10 minutes to 8:00. And, you know, having come off of meetings till 1:00 in the morning, I'm just really proud of this board for how effectively you work together.
I was going to bring that to their attention as my last meeting, that I wanted you to know. Anyway. Oh, I had it down for December 6th for some reason, but, okay.
Can't we just do it while we're at the conference?
I had it, I thought we had already discussed it.
When does, I have to leave at 1:00. Is that gonna be enough time?
And the 6th is still the, the 5th is still the DAC.
I can do that one.
You can, cannot?
I would, would like to.
Yeah, so it was gonna be. I thought we said this last meeting. Well, I had it down for some reason. I guess I made it up. All right. Now, we have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Aye, at 10 minutes to 8:00. I apologize, it would've been 20 minutes early if I hadn't asked.